Welcome, everyone. It's 5:30 and it's time to start our meeting. As usual, we'll begin with a few housekeeping items. First up is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second?
So move, support.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes from the May 14, 2024 meeting. As always, thank you to the staff for preparing those. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. We're at the point where public can comment on non-agenda items. Please note, though, after the introduction of the concept plan for Gaslight Investors, we'll allow time then for the public comment on that item. So are there any comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Next up is the introduction for the concept plan for Gaslight Investors, PUD amendment request. Please note that nothing is being approved tonight. We're looking at the concept, not all the fine details. Zoning administrator Jay Giannotti will start us off, and then the developer of Gaslight Investors will speak, and then the architect. After that, we'll bring it back up here for discussion and questions prior to allowing public comment. Jay, here up.
So as Commissioner Bates has noted, we are here tonight mainly for the introduction to an amendment and revised concept plan for what is called the Gaslight Investors Plan Unit Development. You may be familiar with the first phase that was developed. Back then, it was called the Jade Pig Plan Unit Development. That was constructed in 2004. Since that time, just to give you a little brief history again, the original PUD for this site, which encompasses property on Wealthy and Lakeside, originally was approved in 2004, with the first phase being constructed in 2005. No further development has occurred on the site since that date. There have been a couple proposals to move forward, one in 2008 to amend the original PUD, but although that was approved, no construction ever happened at that time, so that approval lapsed. There was a revised concept brought forward to the Planning Commission in 2020, but again, that never advanced beyond the introduction phase. So what we are here tonight is to hear another request to revise the existing PUD site plan. Just to clarify where we are in this process, as Commissioner Bates alluded to, we're only here looking at the concept and looking to review it and provide feedback. So no decisions on approval or recommendations of approval are being asked tonight. This is sort of part, step two A, I would call this, in the overall review process, where we have a concept plan. This is the introduction before you all. The next steps after this would be a formal public hearing, again with the Planning Commission, followed by introductions and hearings with the City Commission, once the Planning Commission has given their approval on the concept. I also want to stress, when we talk about a concept plan, you're not going to see every last detail that may be being proposed or considered here. What we're looking at at this stage is basically just to look at the overall proposed arrangement of buildings, layout, access, and other significant elements. So things like detailed designs, specific uses, or things like that are not being considered at this stage. Certainly, by the time we get to the final plan review, those things will be presented and brought forth for consideration, but at this step of the process, those levels of details are not necessary at this point. That being said, you're certainly welcome to ask questions or request additional information, although, again, depending on what the request is, not everything necessarily needs to be considered at this stage, but should be brought forth with the understanding that it will be provided at the final plan review stage. And staff and consultants are here to help you clarify, you know, the difference between those two as well, if there's any other lingering questions on that. I will defer most of the detailed discussions of this plan to the developer and the architects, although I did want to quickly highlight some of the main differences that have changed from 2004 to now, and how that might relate to some of our existing ordinances and other comparisons that we may have. First up, the plan itself, as we proposed tonight, has nine total buildings versus seven total buildings in the original plan. This includes a larger number of commercial and mixed-use buildings compared to 2004. It includes a brand-new parking structure compared to the old that is currently existing. It also provides for more varied housing types, including attainable apartments, condominiums, and townhouses along Lakeside Drive. The largest building in this new plan is seven stories and approximately 94-foot tall. The seven stories for the tallest building is the same as it was in 2004, although the 94-foot height is a little bit higher than what was approved in 2004. We have provided in the materials a comparison of some of other major buildings in the city, so you can kind of compare where the 94-foot would kind of fall compared to Blodgett Hospital and the high school, the middle school, and other prominent buildings here in the city. There are more residential units proposed in this plan, a total of 180 in total. Compared to the overall residential density of this, this would more or less correspond to what it would be currently allowed in a multifamily district in terms of the overall residential density for new construction. So I believe this works out to about 21.2 dwellings per acre versus 20.7 under the current MFR standards, so very closely aligned with that. The current plan proposes fewer overall parking spaces compared to the other plan. I did want to emphasize on this point that there still would be an increase over what the parking is there existing. Most of the existing parking is within that existing parking garage. Much of the other parking that was proposed was never developed because none of the other phases of that development were ever constructed. So while the total number is less than the total number from 2004, there would still be an increase of about 150 to 200 spaces over what is there currently on site. We should also note that those these parking regulations have changed significantly since 2004, so in most cases, the city doesn't require as much parking nowadays compared to when this first PUD was presented. We have recommended, however, that, you know, some parking studies and traffic studies be provided at the final plan stage to ensure that what is being proposed is adequate to serve all the different uses that are proposed here. I also would note that as part of this plan, the existing structure would be demolished and replaced by a temporary parking lot while the new parking garage and new buildings are constructed. We are recommending that when the final PUD agreement is brought forth, there'd be specific conditions regarding the construction and the use of that temporary parking lots. In terms of other access, the main vehicular road in previous plans connected more or less to Reef Lake Boulevard to the north. In this concept, it is more aligned with connecting with Shopping Center Drive further to the west, and then connecting to Lakeside Drive at that intersection. The current plan shows a roundabout to help with traffic, but at this point, again, we would recommend more detailed traffic studies be done to make sure that all the impacts of this are understood. On a similar vein, the plan does recommend or oppose separating vehicle traffic from heavy truck and service traffic via a dedicated one-way access road that would be accessible at the southeast corner from Wealthy, basically next to where the Chase Bank currently is. Again, the traffic studies should address this potential change in truck traffic and the impacts that might cause. Last but not least, the existing fountain and public arts that is visible from Bagley would be removed, replaced by a landscape median and sort of rearranged diagonal parking. However, there are some spaces indicated in this plan, as you'll see, that do call for the potentially new areas for public art, public access, although the exact functions and designs of these are not being provided at this time. We've also listed in here what the six specific PUD approval criteria are for approving a PUD. At this stage, we won't go too in-depth about this, just to highlight a couple of these criteria for now. As mentioned, the overall mixed use, while some of the different functions of the buildings may be changing, the overall mixed use does appear at this point to be relatively similar to the 2004 plan. Again, for concept plan purposes, the level of detail that's being provided at this point is generally sufficient. When the Planning Commission asks their questions and makes their requests, they can certainly request some clarification on certain things. There may still be a couple of changes between now when the public hearing may happen, but in terms of the level of detail you're considering, this is generally sufficient at this point. More detailed information would be provided at the final plan stage based on the requests of the Planning Commission and the City Commission. In terms of the past, comparing this to past history, I would note that this part of the city has generally been always used for high-intensity uses. For those of you who are really steeped in East Green Rapids history, this was the original site of the old Ramona Park, Amusement Park. When that closed down in the 50s, it was redeveloped into today's DNW Shopping Plaza, the former Jacson's Department Store, and the apartments and condos that now front on Lakeside Drive. So this part of the city, again, has always been home to higher intensity, higher-density uses. That is not perceived to be changing with this, with this plan. So with all that in mind, again, I'll leave the details of this to the applicants. But if there are any questions about the process and any overarching questions, either I or staff can ask or answer for you. We can do that now. Just to clarify again, no decisions on this plan is being asked tonight. The only decision we may be asking for tonight is if the Planning Commission wants to move to a public hearing in July or request more revisions before making that decision.
Jay, you mentioned a parking study and a traffic study. Is that something we as a commission would initiate, or is that something that would be initiated by you? And are those two distinct things?
Yeah. I mean, you can request those. Ultimately, up to the applicants to provide that study for the commission to review.
And how would we go about requesting that, you know, technically officially up here?
Well, I think in the memorandum that Jay prepared, we noted that those are already recommendations from staff, so that's something that we're already requesting. It's kind of a given, but that, with that said, if there's some other aspect to the proposed plan that the Planning Commission has interest in, it would be helpful to share that, and then we would work with the developer on parameters around whatever that, what other additional things you may request.
Do the traffic studies generally include pedestrian or bicycle movement through the site? Or is it strictly focused on automobiles?
I mean, generally, from the site, from the site plan itself, you're going to see the facilities for pedestrians. In terms of estimated counts, you know, that's not typical. In terms of traffic impact studies, usually what you're looking for is what is the impact of the development on the area? Do we have necessary infrastructure in place to handle that volume? What does that do to level of service? Those types of things. So generally, we're looking for what types of improvements would have to be made in order to maintain or improve level of service to the area, so we don't end up with any sort of decline in level of service.
Is parking part and parcel to that traffic study, or is that separate?
The parking, I would say, would be separate from the traffic.
Jay, can you clarify process? Is it, are there two more? So if it goes to a public hearing in your little bubble diagram there, is there one more at the final stage that comes back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so when the final plan is submitted, there would be another round of Planning Commission review and City Commission review.
So there's potentially after tonight, if it goes to a next public hearing, there would be an addition, so two more.
So I mean, the next public hearing would still be considered the concept plan.
Gotcha.
Any other questions for Jay now? Otherwise, we'll invite the architect to come up.
We'd be discussing, have a chance to discuss things further, but today?
After they're done speaking.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
We may be calling on you for more questions. Will the developer please come up and introduce yourself before speaking?
Sure. Thanks, Jay. Good evening. My name is Scott Weirda. I'm here on behalf of myself and Brian DeVries. Originally Jade Pig Ventures, now Gaslight Ventures, more just a structural change that we've done over time. When I started thinking about back to 2004, there's not many of us that were here at that time. I think Paul and John and I are probably the only two that were part of that process, so it does start to age you, but anyway. I do appreciate all your time. We're going to be spending a lot of time together over the coming months, and kind of as some of the questions, yeah, the process, there'll be lots of time for going over each element, both in the preliminary stage, and then ultimately, what I kind of like to talk about, the difference in preliminary and final, is it's hard for us to know what's going to get approved, and so you don't spend all the time and money on the architectural details until you know what the concept is. That seems to be the easiest way I tend to describe it. We have an excellent team. You'll get to know them as well, Mike Corby and Scott Vin from Integrated Architecture, John Casterly from Naderfeld, and then his, you know, part of that firm. Also would note that I've spent a lot of time with your mayor, Kate Favalli, over the last couple of years, frankly. City manager Shay Charles, deputy city manager Doug LaFave, and Jay Giannotti, and of course, as I mentioned, Paul and John over the years. So you really have an excellent team around you. Not sure over this. And I think there, you know, we'll be able to answer all the questions that you guys have in a careful and thoughtful manner. I think, just a little background on myself, for those that I don't know, I would say, second only to my family and my friends, I am very passionate about real estate development, passionate about architecture, very much in the arts and our community, and I'm equally excited about what we're doing here. And I believe what we proposed and what we'll start working through can and will be, in fact, transformational to Gaslight Village. So, you know, with that in mind, I spent my entire career building shopping centers and office buildings, so over the last 37, 38 years, and mixed-use developments back in 2000, or excuse me, 1995, Brian DeVries and I started Jade Pig Ventures, did a number of shopping centers, mixed use, and were the two that purchased the Jacobsons when they went bankrupt back in 2001 or two-ish. And that was a very interesting time around the community. There was a lot of fear with, you know, what would happen to Gaslight Village during that period of time, and then it was a long process. We had to go through the whole bankruptcy side of, and we were the successful bidders of that amongst a number of outside groups. So there was a lot of enthusiasm at that time. We started with the two buildings that you see here now, that, you know, as Jay summarized, the, frankly, didn't recall that we came back in 2008. But anyway, we've, clearly, 2008 was a very interesting time, you know, the banking crisis. We certainly paused at that time. It was also the same time that I started CWD with Sam Cummings and Dan DeVos, which frankly took a lot of my focus with a lot of buildings downtown, Grand Rapids, and various projects that we undertook. So part of this background, I've had people question like, why so long? And I guess I'd say 20 years does go kind of fast, but at the same time, we were doing a lot of other, a lot of other projects. One of our more recent developments and near here is Breton Village. Brian and I bought that quite some time ago, and I would hope people will agree, but it's been quite successful, but it took a while. We had to de-mall the entire shopping center in order to open that up, get rid of tenants, things like that, and then we've been very successful in bringing kind of unique-to-market tenants. Most of the tenants in there have one store in this marketplace, and that was very intentional, but it was also what kind of tipped the scales of me saying, you know, let's do this in Gaslight. And I think that's proven to us as investors that that success can be, we're only a mile away, and while our traffic patterns are different here, I believe we can get some of the market unique tenants here in Gaslight, that would be important to solidify that. So maybe by way of example, scale is, you know, is one of the concepts that you start looking at. Breton Village is 200,000 square feet was the absolute minimum as I was trying to work to get the number of national and unique local to locate there. Usually, they would kind of start, nah, if you're not at least 300,000 square feet or more, we really don't get the co-tenancy that we want. But clearly, we were able to ultimately convince them, and their sales have been incredibly strong. And so that's the point that I've even tested that. If you'll know, we originally just had kind of all local in here. Athleta, which has been here for a few years now, they're already remodeling their store. It's been very successful. They wanted to be at Breton Village, couldn't because of some exclusivity that we had with Lululemon. But that was an interesting test for us to see how they would do the same thing with LoveSec that's recently opened, you know, a year and a half or so, two years, very strong sales. So those are all indicators to us as we were looking at this, like, I think we're at that point now where we can do this. And over these last two years, we've looked at a variety of different ideas and concepts. 20 years ago, the parking deck was, or 22 years ago, the parking deck was 22 years newer, and it's, you know, it's time. And, but at that time, you know, just economically, it didn't really make a whole lot of sense to take that down, and so that largely defined how the project was developed. Being at the state we're at now, I think this largely, you know, reflects the master plan, frankly, as we've, as we looked at that opportunity and looked at the master plan. That not only informed our decision-making, but it also was the basis of what we designed and presented. From our perspective, as I mentioned, density and scale in these mixed juices are critical to the success of Gaslight. We need it to be sustainable. I think there are things that make Gaslight unique. It's kind of that inherent charm that we have in Gaslight Village and walkable community, and I think this plan significantly reinforces that. It's a wonderful connector now between Wealthy and Lakeside, and you'll walk through all of that, but very much with the roads. We want to continue the snowmelt system. We want to increase the landscaping and that connectivity that you'll see as you go through this process. Also believe that we can get some signature tenants, similar to what I kind of mentioned, and that'll be important to continue the draw. And when I, when I say that, that combination of national and local, you know, from our experiences, has been really good for the local tenants. The nationals tend to have all the brand recognition, do a lot of the advertising, and again, as evidenced by what we've seen just down the street, that's been proven true. Residential types, you'll see on the plan that Mike will go through, we definitely have, and as Jay mentioned, a variety of different residential types, from townhomes along Lakeside, potential condominiums, rental units, and some attainable housing units. So in order to move forward on this, and as we work through this process, very much our intent is to do something architecturally impactful, and I mean that sincerely. I think it'll socially strengthen Gaslight Village, and it'll move the needle in Gaslight. I love it when people, you know, are proud to shopping in the community or wherever we have investments, and they linger. Everybody does better when that, when that situation. So feel free to ask any of those type of questions and our background on that. Clearly, we need this to be financially successful and sustainable, not only for ourselves, the development of our tenants, and certainly the community. And the filter, as I've aged, and for myself and my partners, is also about having fun. We do have some flexibility on what we do and where we develop, and one of our filters is always, do we get to have fun? So I truly want to have an enjoyable process. I do not expect that we'll always agree on everything. That's fine. But I think we can have some fun with this and respectful and enjoy and find some consensus, and that is truly critical to us as we move forward some things. I do look forward to all your questions and feedback, certainly the community's feedback, and ultimately, at the end, as we get through the final area site plan, I believe we can find a path forward, hopefully. Mike Corby from Integrated will now describe the site plan.
Good evening. Mike Corby with Integrated Architecture, 840 Ottawa, Grand Rapids. I think Scott mentioned, two big things really are a big part of the plan that we're going to walk through, and I apologize to the audience, a lot of the graphics aren't probably going to be that clear for you back there, but I'll try to explain them as well as I can. But I think two big things happened. The city went through a master planning process in 2018, really focused on this property, obviously, big part of the city, important site in the city. And I'll go through some of those excerpts just because I think it's important to look at that. And then also, as Scott said, you know, 20 years ago, the parking garage that was probably still a maintenance thing then has become a bigger maintenance thing. So those two things really helped kind of clear the way for the plan that we're going to look at. I think a lot of the other aspects of the plan are very consistent with what was presented in 2004 in terms of some of the strategic things. So obviously, Jay highlighted some of those, but I'll go through this quickly. Again, if you have specific questions, please jump in. But I think the graphic on the screen kind of shows an aerial view, and I think unfortunately, if I can point to this, there's the parking garage right in the middle of the site. I think the connectivity is obviously affected, but I think the first phase kind of reset some of the existing infrastructure, you know, kind of heading north on Bagley. Obviously, the terminus became the parking structure, and I think the artwork became kind of the foreground to kind of just pretty that up. But I think ultimately, the only way that we could get from north to south with that structure still there was going around it. Today, we've got a different situation. So again, as Scott mentioned, how we can get a, call it a continuation of the streetscape that makes Wealthy what it is to the north was important. So we wanted it to be, continue the walkability that currently exists there, and continue the success that the first phase kind of allowed. It's definitely a strong community destination, but it's even beyond that. It draws people from outside the area to retail, restaurants, and other services. So just to highlight a few of the things that I think are important, the diagrams on the left are excerpts from the city's master plan study that was done in 2018, and I think the top two, the first one on the right, was what the city determined or the consultant determined as option A, which at that time, obviously, would put that connection right through the parking garage, which was still part of the plan. So that wasn't practical, and you can see some of the other options that were investigated or explored kind of went around there. They weren't ideal. These are things that we wrestled with as we were kind of looking at the plan, and you saw some earlier stages a couple of years ago, and we, when we were looking at some things, we were trying to get around that. Wasn't, in quotes, "natural," in my opinion. It didn't tie into the fabric of the city's network that's there, and until we could kind of really say, let's get the parking garage out of there, we weren't really able to do what we're planning to do now. So I think that was an important consideration. The site also, once you get away from the Wealthy street grid, you can see the shape of the site, the road configuration that kind of heads north of Wealthy starts to present some other opportunities, let's call them, where the roads start to, the roads are angled, you've got some curved roads in there. So we looked at it as how do we kind of create, how do we tie into kind of this grid network that's already there, do something that feels right, and we take advantage of the current infrastructure? So I think what we did was, we focused on that north-south vehicular connectivity, but we also, to Commissioner Fines's point, we really focused on the pedestrian movement too, not just the streetscape, but how you moved north and south on the site, east and west on the site, but also how you got from, how you got access to services, how services got access to the buildings. These are all things that were very, have been very carefully kind of choreographed in this. So our current plan is showing, in this diagram that you see there, the, kind of the redder diagrams of the vehicular movement, so the movement that runs north-south through the site basically is a continuation of Bagley. Again, the parking structures are moved, we've got architecture flanking that movement, so we've got kind of the streetscape that is much like what Wealthy is, where we've got a nice relationship between cars, people, and architecture. Because of the shape of the site, we had to kind of work our way around it, and you can see what we've done. can see what we've done is actually taken advantage of kind of these turns that we have to do. So I'll show you in a, in a rendering in a minute. That vista that we've created now by that north-south extension, the terminus of that, or at least the visual terminus of that, is a piece of architecture. So we've got the ability to kind of, again, use the shape of the site to kind of actually be an advantage in terms of how we create nodes and create some of these vistas. So the, the service access as well, you know, Scott obviously understands retail very, 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 very well, and the tenants that are in the buildings need good ability to access the retail spaces. So we've separated that. As Jay mentioned, it's on the east side, kind of on the angular portion of the site, and it, and it provides access both to the primary retail spaces, but also our building D. I'll show you the, the key in a moment. Our building D, the access to the parking. We've got some parking that's integrated in the building D as well. So all of these things, again, very much choreographed. The blue dash lines then show how we're looking at pedestrian movement, both north and south, again, and east and west. So we've got the expected movement along the, call it the Bagley extension, normal streetscape sidewalk in front of retailers. We've also got, call it, kind of alleyways, pedestrian alleyways that help us link between services, like the parking structure and buildings, but otherwise give pedestrians kind of hospitable, kind of nice walkable movements from north to south. And the service, the service drive is, is really relegated to service. It's a one-way drive that would go, that goes north-south. This kind of illustrates some of the things that I just mentioned. So it's kind of turned, so north is to the left. So you can see, we, we're basically extending Bagley. One of the things that we're doing, I think Jay mentioned, is we're correcting some things that we've learned maybe don't work as well, like that curved parking that is in front of the art, in front of the parking garage, doesn't work very well ergonomically. So we're going to a kind of a more normal angled parking. So we're correcting that a little bit, and then that extends northward. And that green kind of oval that you see there is that terminus that I mentioned. So that would be a foreground space to another building. We look at that as a node. So a social node, maybe that's a place where we're thinking, might be another good opportunity for restaurants, hangout space, so that, again, we're taking some of these very important spaces beyond just the buildings and leveraging them. Our roadway then kind of turns and comes around and links into the current infrastructure. We studied a lot of different ways to connect to Lakeside, but we're kind of coming around and we're actually ultimately connecting to Lakeside. As Jay mentioned, we're showing a roundabout there. That is not something that is an integral part of our plan. It happened to be something that the city has actually explored. And it, it could be an opportunity there. If, if it's not a roundabout, it's, it's not important to our plan, but it was something that was kind of, again, as we looked at some of the city's priorities. But I think you'll see the, the entire lane that we're creating, as well as what we're doing on portions of the site that don't have architecture like Lakeside and shopping centers, we're resetting the relationship between the roads, pedestrians, and the architecture. So we're really trying to get this to be a, a very natural lane that kind of ties into the existing infrastructure and the existing road network of the city. So it feels right. It feels natural. This is our plan. As, as Jay mentioned, we're proposing nine structures. In the previous plan, the parking garage was a large, it was, it was an acre of parking, basically, and it wasn't very efficient in the, in the way it was laid out. Part of it was because the, the angle that kind of we had to contend with, or that structure had to contend with. So we're basically bisecting, cutting through that. We've got buildings D, C, E, F, G, and H. I'll talk about them in a second. And then the parking structure, which has been relocated kind of a little bit north and a little bit west of its current location. The, so just briefly on each building, as Jay mentioned, we're seven stories. Once again, with the architecture, we wanted to kind of stay consistent with what was part of the original plan, so we're not exceeding seven stories. In fact, the original plan had a seven-story building and a six-story building. D is our, is our tallest building, it's seven stories. That particular building is helping us deal with the support parking strategy that we have. So instead of having all of our parking in the structure itself, we've kind of addressed it in three ways. One is we've expanded the amount of street parking, which would be kind of the first parking for retail consumers or customers. And so we've got, between that parking and a two-story elevated parking floors in building D, we've got almost 200 parking spaces kind of on that, call it the southern portion of the plan. So they'll be available for users in that, the buildings in that areas as well as consumers. The parking structure itself as well. And then the third aspect for our parking strategy is buildings G and H right now have their parking need actually embedded within the building. So building H is 14 townhomes right now in this iteration. They've got their parking garages, as well as guest parking, available. And then building G has underground parking that serves that. So a little bit of, of different parking strategy, but trying to kind of spread the parking out, get the parking distributed in a way that works more effectively. As I said, building D is seven stories. First level is retail, two levels of parking, four levels of residential. Building C currently is a five-story building, first level of retail, four levels of residential. Building E, which I affectionately call the jewel, because we really look at this as a nice iconic piece of architecture that's kind of on the terminus of the Bagley extension, is currently shown at five stories. Scott's had some interest with potential users that may look at multiple levels of commercial, and then some residential as well. So again, that, that's kind of an interesting building. I think it's going to be a, a great kind of centerpiece to the development. Building F is a four-story building. It's, it's planned to be right now all residential, but it's possible, again, based on the demand for retail, that the lower level could be retail as well. Those are smaller format apartments. As Scott mentioned, we're looking at kind of creating a number of different choices residentially in the development, and that kind of allows us to kind of provide some smaller format apartments. Building G in the current plan is a single-story commercial structure with parking below. So it, it basically can rely on that, as well as the garage that's right across the street from that. And building H is our 14 townhomes, two and a half to three-story townhomes, that would have their parking attached to them. And then the last piece is, is the parking garage. Right now, the parking garage is a nice, simple rectangle. It's very efficient. It currently has three stories. And it's kind of the, the variable that we have to make sure that our parking count can serve the demand. You really can't see this one. This just, I think, formulaically, we've looked at all the uses. We've looked at the parking needs that we see. Obviously, Scott wants to make sure that he can provide plenty of parking. He's had the ability to kind of understand what the parking situation is in the area, to make sure that the formulas work with the uses that we're providing. So this basically just goes through and identifies how we've kind of formulaically set up the parking situation, so that we know that we've got enough parking to, to satisfy the demand. So these are kind of excerpts, excerpts from what you guys have, so I'm sure will be available for questions. But, you know, we're really just, in summary, we're trying to just continue the success, the development that's there, continue the, the, the vision of bringing in kind of a mix of uses, both commercial and residential, and create a soft, or a safe, walkable, and vehicular connection north-south, which is again, a big priority with the city, and, and really just take this piece of land, and it's an important and significant portion of the city, and bring it back to life, reset it, and have it continue on what's, what's been successful so far. So excited to hear your comments.
Can I ask a clarification before we ask comments here? I thought we had received a correction that building F was five-story rather than the four. Could you clarify that, please?
No, I think that's building E. I think on one of our diagrams, we had that listed as a four-story building.
Okay.
Not a five-story building, but it is, it's planned to be a five.
Thank you. At this point, commissioners, do you have any questions for Scott or Mike? Let's start with you.
Oh, boy.
You can, you can pass for now, but we'll start at that end.
Um, let's see. Okay. Well, great presentation. Thank you, Mike. I, I guess the height, I think that's maybe the elephant in the room. Just trying to understand the 94-foot height. I'm assuming there's a big difference, obviously, between 94 feet straight up, or 94 feet tiered back. I'm assuming through architecture, you'll make that look attractive. So I'll just go with that assumption. Why, why such a difference in height? Why does that building need to be the tallest? Why not more balance it out, maybe two or three more 60 feet? What's, what's driving that? Is it the view? Is it just general use?
Well, if you recall, two of the levels of that building are parking.
Right.
So it's essentially a five-story occupied building. The difference from, one of the reasons why is the, the earlier, the 2004 seven-story building was all residential from top to bottom. The first floor of this will be retail. Retailers are going to need higher ceilings. So right off the bat, we're going from a 12-foot height building to a 20-some foot high story. I mean, we've got the parking there. So it's, it's really contributed to that. And I think the, the interesting thing, I think Jay pointed this out in his staff report, is the original building that was approved had a pitched roof. The way the city measures height is to the midpoint of a pitched roof. Effectively, the, the, that building was actually about 92 or 93 feet high. So we wanted to stay within the parameters of the 2004 approval in terms of the height, based on stories. And, and those were the other things that affected the actual height of it, the actual physical height of it.
This is probably more for staff. The parking, I, I've seen and heard some comments about the drive coming, let's see, I guess closer towards Roses. That's, that's probably not desirable, right? Because it gets too close to Reed's Lake Boulevard, I think. And maybe this flushes out in the traffic study, but I, I just know that you don't want two opposing roads coming that close to each other. Is that an accurate statement?
I think that's, that's a fair opinion. Yes.
Yeah. And there's probably more traffic coming in on opposite shopping center drive, right? So probably the flow of traffic, I'm assuming, would be better that way.
Yeah, I think a couple of things. You've got that curve coming around, so you've got kind of a blind.
Right, right.
And so anything further eastward, we did look at that actually in, in early examples. And the, the current intersection that we're tying into has been working very, very well, according to the city. And to have it any further east, we're just, not that it can't work, I think we're just in a, in a safer position.
Right.
The other thing I think it does is it, is it kind of resets, shopping center road is basically, right now, it's a truck entrance to D and W, and it's, it's, it's something that could be much more, that's a city right-of-way. And I think we're looking at leveraging it into something that's, that's actually going to work nicer.
I'm good for the moment.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of good stuff in here. I appreciate your passion for real estate development. And the, there's a couple of things, like the height, I think is going to continue to be an issue. We'll have to keep talking about it. The, the one thing, I reread the master plan, and my sticking point is really on the connectivity. It's talked about in the master plan, the connect to a street, connecting Bagley to Reed's Lake Boulevard. It's the most direct and intuitive route. Is that, that, that would be my preference to see that connected. I think also, with the vehicular circulation with those, it just seems like those turnarounds are kind of confusing and perplexing. I also don't see much in the way of bike lanes, so pedestrian bikes, vehicles, kind of an intuitive flow to Reed's Lake Boulevard. That would be my preference. And then the other, the other thing that stood out to me was the parking reduction. There's the master plan, the ordinance, the PUD, all revolve around two parking spaces per dwelling unit. And you guys are proposing one parking space per dwelling unit. So I think more, there's more there, there to talk about.
I think the one thing that, when you're dealing with a mixed-use development, you've got the kind of non, kind of peak overlap, so that this is a very typical situation where you've got a lot of parking to, to deal with, both the retail, the commercial, and the residential. So those overlaps. The thing that we don't want to do, I think, is do too many spaces either. We want to do the right amount. And I think, based on the experiences that, that we have and that Scott has, from just knowing the situation with the current phase that's in place, we're very comfortable. We've got, the deck actually has the ability to be bigger if it needs to be, I suppose. So we've got the ability to kind of, if, if we see that there's an issue there, we've got the ability to kind of address it. But I want to make another point. The, we are, we feel the connectivity to Reed's Lake is important. So we do have that pedestrian way that runs along the east side of G and H. So the vehicular, you got two things that you're dealing with. You've got the safety issue with the vehicles. You've got the, the idea that you, you don't want to necessarily have the pedestrians have to follow suit with that. So I think we've actually got, in this diagram, you can see where we've actually got, I think what you're describing is that more kind of very fluid north-south connectivity for the pedestrians. And the vehicles are in a kind of, call it safer situation, where they're away from that curve and things that would not be as ideal.
Greg, you're up next.
You done?
Yep.
I kind of agree with the connectivity to shopping center road. I think what, my only concern is that we're bringing a lot of the traffic closer to the single-family residential part of the city, whereas if it connected to Reed's Lake Boulevard, it's pulling it away a little bit more. I understand why you're doing it, and it still may be the right thing to do, but it would be great to see a little bit, maybe a study or two, as to why that's not working to Reed's Lake Boulevard. It'd be good to understand that. And for the city, please don't do a roundabout. It's very pedestrian-unfriendly. I would rather see pedestrians be safe. As far as the height, I anticipate the next time you're here, we'll start to see some setbacks, facade setbacks, things like that. I think that's important. We don't want these great big monsters marching down the road. We want it to be a little softer, but I also know Integrated Architecture, and I'm pretty confident it'll be fine. And one other thing, and I don't know, and Jay or John Huff will tell me to shut up if I'm going too far on this. I'm a little concerned about, oh, what number is it? C and F. It kind of blocks off, so at some point, we all hope that the D and W site gets developed. And they're going to come here in front of us and ask for very similar things. And I, I'm worried that you're going to be blocking off a lot of the development opportunities there, and it's going to make it harder for them. And it's going to put more of a burden on the city, because they're going to want to do more and bigger. And again, we're hypothesizing, I can't do that, we can't do that. But you're kind of turning your back to them. So I feel like it's really shutting down future development opportunities for D and W, which does impact Gaslight, because we all want that to be developed, and we want that to be as successful as Scott Weir's development. We want that, this to be successful, too. So I'm not really sure what I'm saying there, other than I'm a little concerned that it's hurting future development of other sites and So I'm not really sure what I'm saying there, other than I'm a little concerned that it's hurting future development of other sites in Gaslight.
Well, I think you said the key phrase that we can't really deal with it directly. We have to deal with it. So we have actually, we have actually thought about it. So the gaps between C and A, the gaps between C and F actually help us look at potentially an east-west road network that would tie into, you know, Croswell could come northward, and we could actually create, extend the grid that, that I think everybody wants to see extended. So you could do a liner building. I mean, I'm getting into things that we're hypothesizing about, Greg, that we don't have control over. But I think it's actually opposite of what you're thinking.
Mike, you said what I wanted to hear, and it's that you have thought about it.
Right.
And you have looked into it. And I, and I know you enough to know that you probably have. So I take your word. I think that's all I've got for right now.
The other thing about the heights, we are, to your point, Pete, we are stepping back. I think that the highest street front that we'll have on D or C will be three stories, and then we step back on both the south and the west facades.
Chris?
First of all, I want to thank Gaslight Investors for bringing this to us now. You know, my guess is the most often-asked question in the city is what's going on with the site. So now here we are. So thank you for now giving us an opportunity to address that. My first question relates to the residential units. Scott, you had mentioned that there'd be a combination of townhomes. I think you even said housing units, condos and apartments. When will that be decided? What that mixes?
I think right now, building H, which is the townhomes, those are pretty well set as condominiums. So individual townhomes, condominiums. Building D has four floors of residential. I think the market's going to dictate a little bit, but I think that's in development right now. But I think D is set up nicely. It's going to have, you know, it's obviously going to have views towards the lake. F is the smaller format. So those will probably stay apartments. And then C is, again, got some question mark, but that's probably going to be apartments as well. So I'd say probably D and H are the two best candidates. E also has some ability, if we do residential, on some of the upper floors to be a condominium type. So it's, I don't know that we could say it, it certainly isn't today. We don't have that figured out now. But I think we're, as the plans emerge, we'll, we'll.
Will that be determined by the next round for the site plans?
I don't know if it will or not. I don't know if we'll be able to definitively say what's going to be beyond H, what's for sale or for rent.
Wouldn't the parking be impacted by that designation? For instance, wouldn't there be more or less of a need for parking if it's a condo versus an apartment?
It depends. I think the H, the townhouse user probably wants two spaces, yeah. The thing that we've explored with E is possibly a bridge connection to eight or to D that would allow you to have essentially parking, and you could walk right from your parking spaces over to that building. And then obviously, in terms of assigned spaces, yeah, there might be more than one assigned to that individual unit. So I think we're into that, we're thinking about that stuff right now. So I think we're, hopefully we'll have better answers on the next, in the next meeting.
And when you say townhomes, are those actually owned by the occupants, the owners?
At this point, they're looked at as condominiums.
And they would pay property taxes?
Correct.
The owners would?
Yes.
The, the parking that you have contemplated, would there be a charge for the, for the, say, if it's an apartment? Would there be a, a, would the residents have to pay for that parking?
Yeah, well, let Scott address that.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this, we're probably getting into the nuance between preliminary and final. So, you know, a lot of this will be determined as we do that. But, but the overall economics are going to be fluid, as we understand what height, what we're going to do. But the, the current anticipation would be free parking for the community. We're working on lots of little variables. What you'll note, though, historically, what we've had to do, it was largely impacted by student activity, that, that we had to control that for the people that actually pay us rent and use our buildings and things like that. We have a very different situation by this type of development. So clearly, we have a lot of street parking that will add to that. But residentially, and Mike touched on that, the mix of uses will really is how this will flow. And I'm, and I'm fairly certain when we get into the traffic study, it's going to support this type of thing, that these mix of uses. Paul can speak to this extremely well. You know, the combination of peak times when restaurants are busy is different when an office-type user is busy or retail shopping. And then the same thing with pedestrians as well as residential uses. So our ratio is really based on where we, not only the needle has been, where it's going. And I think to, to address on that parking side of the equation a little bit, what Commissioner Metz's comment was, yes, we've actually spent significant amount of time on property we don't own and discussing how that might connect. Even the parking structure is located in a location that, in the event that ever happened. Or as the autonomous vehicle gets more and more used and things like that, I'm not sure it's in my business lifetime, but we'll see. But it, all of those things, as parking densities are, or use decreases, we're going to have the centralized parking. And then so in theory, more and more density can happen around it because we've centralized, you know, that in the future. But, but specifically to your question, the intent is the parking structure, as we're, based on the way that location. We don't anticipate we'd have the same issue with student parking. The only reason we ended up doing that was strictly for that. But the intent would be that it would be free. In terms of our tenants, that'll just be an economic, you know, as we get into the details of that, I don't.
Let me clarify the reason for the question. I understand that's probably going down further. But for me, it's more conceptual in that as a resident of Lovett, you know, right next to.
Yeah.
If, if your residents are paying for parking, why wouldn't they just go to free street parking right on my block or Greenwood or adjacent lots? And wouldn't that create an issue?
Yeah. I mean, historically, people find the least restricted place, right? I mean, I can't argue that, so, sure.
Okay. You obviously have a good relationship with Spartan Nash, I would think, with Breton Village, with them being a tenant there. Have you talked to them about this development? And are you at liberty to share any discussions with?
No, I've met with the neighbor, the Geenan family, on numerous occasions over the last few years on this. They're very aware of this, what we're doing. Probably as recently as within the last six months, we've sat down and talked about that. But I'll literally have to let them address what their, what their long-term plans are. So I honestly don't have an answer for you. But, but as Mike kind of pointed out, sure would be great, right, to do that. But it would be very easy to mirror A, C, you know, where they would kind of have their backs facing. We can line, line buildings and things like that, depending on how they develop it. So our connection points between A and C, C and F, and even Shopping Center Drive, all become really natural connection points for that. So I think as you think that through, and how Croswell could extend, we're, we really are addressing that, that potential.
Thank you. And last question, this is more for the public, although I have my own ideas. But, you know, in your words, what is the benefit to the community by you developing this versus the alternative of not developing?
Sitting there?
Yeah.
How much time do you have? You know, ultimately, success of, of what we've seen, the density and the success. You'll, you'll note we have some turnover and things like that with the retailers in Gaslight. It's not uncommon in retail. But the density is a very important factor for the long-term success of Gaslight, in my opinion. We've proven that down the street. We've proven that in a number of shopping centers and things that we have. The, the added mixed use will add to the vibrancy. So the community benefits not only from, obviously, you know, it's additive with tax bases, additive with, you know, the livability and the desirability of charmingness, you know, to stroll through the site. The, gosh, I can't think of any negatives, but, you know, I certainly respect that somebody might have opinions on height. We were very purposeful in where we put that. Building D is not blocking anyone's views. It gets hidden by the existing infrastructure of both B and A, and in including how you come into the site from the, from the north and the west. So we, we did want to take advantage of some of those potential views. But, but yeah, that's, I think as we get into this further, you know, this is really massing right now. So that's kind of that first comment I made that Mike brought out. We're, we're here conceptually to get all this feedback, what your thoughts are, and, and then we adjust. I mean, you know, to what, where we find consensus. But this is based on what I believe is, is the critical mass that we need, both from a residential side, but also very much for, from a, from a retail side. So I've actually looked at the entire Gaslight Village, and I didn't mention that before. So on a scale basis, Integrated went through and started looking at and saying, okay, we don't have to own it all. What's, what else is on the south side of Wealthy? What's in, you know, what's in the D and W site, on the Geenan site there in that district? Well.
Two fifty, two seventy?
Ironically, it's, it's slightly larger when you look at all the commercial uses than, than Gaslight. So I think we're getting to that scale that I think is important.
Thank you, Si.
Sure.
Commissioner Fain?
Sure. First of all, thank you for coming here. I think we're all excited to see something happen with this location. I was not on the commission back in 2020, but I did attend that meeting, and that was quite a meeting and quite a week. Hopefully, we'll have more favorable conditions as this goes around. A lot of my concerns have been addressed. I'm a little uncomfortable with the height, as Commissioner Metz asked about. Just the connection to Shopping Center Road versus Reed's Lake Boulevard continues to be something I might want to consider alternatives. But largely, my attention has been drawn to the pedestrian connections. Currently, it's not very usable. This plan, obviously, is a big improvement. There's several ways through it. But if I think about a pedestrian trying to go from Bagley, you know, over to Lakeside, from either, you know, the Steakhouse or Carolina Kitchen, it's a little, a little bit convoluted. It's not a straight shot. There's, you know, a number of crosswalks to navigate. The north-south corridor, kind of along the D and W route, is a little, is a little cleaner. Back in two thousand and four, I noted that there was reference to asking, I believe, the owners of D and W for a pedestrian easement. And I'm just curious if that was ever pursued, or if you got anywhere with that.
Well, I think to address, we have actually kept the buildings away so that we could create a, I'm going to say, a legitimate pedestrian way through there. And I think if, to get from, for instance, buildings B all the way to Lakeside, the only real, you're not even really crossing a street. You can walk a long sidewalk all the way to Lakeside, and the only thing that you're crossing is the, there's a, there's a one-way service drive behind building E, which isn't really a traffic area, but the, the lane between building D and B. And as I said, the site, unfortunately, the site doesn't allow a straight shot, except the one that you mentioned behind buildings A, C, and F. And we can make that a very pleasant kind of urban alleyway that it's done all the time. And it's safe. You don't have the vehicles, and it's, and it's, so we've left enough room there so we don't have to necessarily rely on D and W's land to, in order to do that.
What, what kind of width do you think? It looks to me like building A might, I don't know how much space is allowed.
There's ten feet right now behind building A to the property line. We've got fifteen feet behind C to our property line, and that continues behind F.
Okay.
The other thing I failed to mention, it rates a little bit to movement, but I don't think it unduly influenced us. But there's a city easement that runs between buildings G and our parking garage that we cannot put buildings on. So there's a, there's a break between architecture that's forced a little bit because of that easement. There's another easement, again, these are technical things that I didn't think were important to, to highlight too much. But there's actually another easement between the parking garage and building F. So we're constrained a little bit by some of those things. But I think we really like the, the way that the pedestrian movement works from north to south. And we're, we like that we've got a very safe way for vehicles to connect to the current, to the current road infrastructure. We can get Traffic Consultant, I think will be helpful in addressing the discussion about vehicles discharging, you know, closer to Reed's Lake Boulevard, and they'll be able to kind of tell you that that's not an ideal situation. So we want to make this safe for pedestrians, but also for vehicular movement on and off the site.
Okay. Thank you.
I won't echo everybody's comments. I think we can all repeat a lot of the same things. But just on the pedestrian safety and flow, I will say I'm a little bit concerned about that connection at Lakeside. Just seeing how people use a street right now, you're going to have walkers, you know, trying to go from Reed's Lake, crossing Lakeside right there. And then you have people from the new downtown flow crossing in front of the residences right there. I think it'd be nice if you could connect that walkway with the intersection with, of like Reed's Lake Boulevard, for example, just to make one fewer pedestrian crossing, because people will just run across the street. On a similar note, if you've ever walked around Wealthy, there are middle schoolers, middle school bike gangs. So I, I think it'd be helpful to give some thought to bike flow. I know there are plenty of sidewalks, and I don't think traffic would be moving too quickly through those new streets. But just creating some dedicated space so that bikes have a place, so that people aren't run over on the sidewalks, or businesses want to put seating outside, that there's, that there's room for everybody. A couple of things that, that haven't been brought up yet. I was wondering on the residential side, how you decided on approximately ten percent being attainable units?
That's still in development. It's not, it's, right now, it's, it's kind of picking a number that's fairly significant. But that's still in development. So it's to get some percentage of housing in this area that could be, that isn't just kind of high-end market rate. That's maybe more available to somebody that's at a certain AMI.
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of it. I just was wondering how, how it came to be, you know, ten percent. Is that a normal mix when it comes to developments of this size?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of more the norm in that percentage when you're talking through, especially in discussions with the city, but other communities as well, is what's a good percentage to, to kind of earmark for attainable.
Okay. And looking at the commercial spaces, I know you don't have, like, firm commitments from anybody, but I'm wondering what your ideal mix would be of the, like, retail and restaurant because compared to office buildings? You know, I know a lot of people have been excited about this project to bring more restaurants, more retail. I think people would be disappointed if it was all office space.
Right. I think one thing that Scott's really good at, and it's kind of evident in the success that he's done in other retail commercial settings, is he really kind of has a curated plan in place where he knows where he wants a restaurant. Where Bodie's is, isn't, didn't just happen to be, oh, a restaurant wants to run. He purposely kind of targets certain spaces in the buildings for that use. And the social spaces or the outdoor spaces that can support that kind of use are designed around that. Like, building E, as I mentioned, is definitely going to be something that could be a restaurant, would be great to be a restaurant. Doesn't have to be a restaurant. But I think he's definitely, if you know Scott well enough, he's definitely got a plan. And he's, he's tied very, very well to kind of the retail marketplace so that he's able to actually make plans happen. So I think that part of it is, is a very positive thing, I think.
The, the last thing I'll say is, I noted there's some green space, or like, community space noted on here. I'd encourage you to, like, try to incorporate as much as you can. I think that's going to bring our community into the space. You know, that's one of the benefits for the community. I know some other folks have mentioned what's up with all the roundabout sort of situations. I wonder if some of those could be subbed out with green space.
Yeah, I think, again, there's a lot of green space near the area. I think we, we wanted to. to create some outdoor nodes, let's call them, so they'll have green space part of them. I didn't mention some things that maybe are worth pointing out since, but this, for instance, this little, this isn't a roundabout. This is actually a drop-off area for residents of Building F and C, so that they've got a place where they can, visitors can come, or if somebody, if you've got an Uber driver or something, they're kind of not basically clogging up the main thoroughfare. We've got spaces for them. The access point for the residents for Building D, since we've got an access point both on the southeast side of the building, as well as the north side of the building. So again, and then that centerpiece that we have, they're really, we hope it's green space, some hardscape. We've got a lot of ideas that we're messing around with right now that I think you'll see as we kind of continue on the path. And then this, again, is a, it's a point of drop-off for the commercial buildings. So again, we're trying to get those elements to not disrupt the primary flow.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I'm also, thanks. I'm also excited to see this proposal, and I recognize the great effort that's been made by the developer and the staff and elected officials. Overall, I feel it's consistent with the 2018 master plan. I know a lot of folks are probably concerned about the density and the height, and I encourage folks to check out the 2018 master plan, which you can find online. There are many benefits to density in the downtown area. Downtowns are by definition places where there should be density, and I don't have concerns about the density. I'm supportive of it in general. I'm not super concerned about the height. It's interesting to know that the Fine Arts wing of the high school is 88 feet, but I'm sure that's already been discussed, and I'm sure that will be worked out to everyone's satisfaction. I'm okay with the reduction of 104 parking spaces. That still leaves 583 spaces. Mr. Weirda mentioned kind of a changing relationship people are having to their personal automobile. Some of that's generational, but, you know, there are people that are relying on renting a car after going on a trip, or using Uber and Lyft to get around town. Car sharing programs are on the rise. We don't see a lot of that here yet, but that is going to come. Greater use of e-bikes and e-scooters, and more walking and cycling is going to happen. And this development will encourage more walking, I think, within Gaslight Village. I also support the 180 residential units. I wish there could be more. We have talked at the Planning Commission about the housing needs issue regionally. It's a national issue, as you all know. We do have a huge shortage of housing units in Metro Grand Rapids, and 180 residential units is a step in the right direction, and I wish it could be more. I also like the potential increase in commercial space. Now, my feedback, in no particular order, I'm wondering about the location of the vehicle parking. Currently, I believe the PUD has subsurface parking throughout on most buildings. Is that right, Mr. Weirda? The way the current PUD is set up?
About the 2004?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
I read that somewhere, yeah.
Under the site on the Old Ramona site, you're going to cuss my memory, we did have underground parking on that Old Ramona site. I don't frankly-
Yeah. Well-
I don't, we did the on that.
Okay.
Didn't anticipate losing the deck.
Right.
So it really was only potentially at some point where we looked at. I don't even know if that was part of that original PUD. I think it might have been just when we talked later, when we were talking about potential different type uses that we went on doing. So, yeah, yeah, that was, yeah. So there was, yeah, so back, basically what I just said. So the deck remained, and then kind of where G and the deck there, that kind of identified some underground parking at that time. And ironically, G does, in fact, do that.
Right. And I do like to see that underground parking at G. Subsurface parking, I really think that could be something that I'd love to see, you know, if it's however feasible it is, I'm not sure, but under C, F, and E. And then D, I'm much more concerned about two levels of that. It's really a monumental, that's a signature building in the development, to have two floors devoted to parking above the retail. I know we do see that a lot in downtown Grand Rapids. There are other places like Toronto that ban that because people want, you know, in Toronto, they want to see those two floors occupied by people. If it's in a condominium, those units would be generating wealth. Two floors of parking is nothing more than an expense. It's not a way to increase the wealth of the city or potential homeowners there. So perhaps D could have one floor of subsurface parking, and then the back half of the first floor could be parking. But I just would really hate to see two floors devoted to parking in that building. Also, is this street, is that a private, is that all private street? If you start at Wealthy, you head west and you work your way out. You mentioned a couple of city easements. Are those rights of way or just some kind of utility easement?
Those are utilities. It's currently the extension north of Wealthy is private. The easement that I referred that runs east-west is a utilities, I believe, Storm and Sanitary.
Storm and Sanitary, and then there's one electrical.
Right.
Perfect. Well, anyway, so otherwise, are we looking at all of that network being privately owned? Okay. And then what are issues with access, you know, in the evening, early in the morning, you know, in the middle of the night? I mean, is that, legally, are you trespassing if you're walking through there and you have no business being there? You're not visiting a friend? You're not shopping? You're not going to an office?
I think it'll operate just like a normal city network. I don't think it's going to have, it's not a restricted area, I guess. I did want to mention to you about D, because I think, as Scott mentioned, I think the, although we do have two parking levels on D, the way we've designed them is they're flat decks. So we're thinking the trajectory is that those, parking is going to decrease that increase, that at least by designing that building with the decks as flat decks, that could be a different use in the future if it needed to be.
Yeah. And I think it's important, what we were trying to do with D is just to be respectful of A and B, existing tenants, existing uses, and then try to make sure we had some close proximity parking to them. Water table does get to be an issue on our underground. The grade of G happens to work, because we have about a 11-foot grade change. So now we're getting into a lot of details we probably don't need to. But that's intentional, that we kind of come in from the west side, and then in theory, that drop-off area at the southeast corner of G is elevated at that higher level. So you're, it's almost flat, basically. You're coming in on that side flat, you're flat on the top, or you come into that building, you're sitting on top of the parking. So grade and water table have a lot to do with that, and then economics have a lot to do with that. Underground parking is in excess of $60,000 of space. Very expensive to build underground parking.
Also, you have a, you could say a seven-story building blocking a five-story building, and you could say you have a five-story building blocking a four-story building. I'm talking in terms of views of the lake. And it's just something I thought about, you know, if that was reversed somehow, you could have, you would still have the same number of floors that would have lake view, but the buildings in front on the lakeside, you'd be able to have a rooftop deck, really could be a really cool situation, where you have the taller buildings in the back with rooftop decks, and then the two slightly shorter buildings in the front with rooftop decks. Could really, pretty cool to have, you know, increase the views for the people in the rear buildings in that way. Create a great sense of community up there on those decks. And then, the elephant in the room has already been mentioned. That's the DNW. That's different than Mr. Mitchell's elephant in the room, but-
My elephant.
But that is the DNW Shopping Center. And it's interesting to hear the number of our commissioners here discuss that issue and the concern about being able to get through. I think my ideal plan would be Crosswell Avenue would go straight through to Reed's Lake Boulevard, and you could have that be a public street, and a lot of issues would be solved by that. So I guess we can only dream about that, and some of the other solutions that were brought up, potential solutions. Thank you.
Well, it's fun to go last, because most of what I was going to ask has been asked already, at least once. But I do have a different elephant, so that makes three, which is almost a circus, but this is, that's exciting in its own right. Before I ask that question, I did want to say thank you for bringing this. This is great. It is, I think, very easy to imagine what's currently an aging parking deck and a grass lot and some cement blocks and a rutted-out parking lot being something much more exciting. So certainly share the optimism that we're going to come to something everybody likes. I do have a couple procedural questions that I think might be, I don't know if they're for John or if they're for Paul, but my elephant is planning for not all of this being built. We've got Buildings A and B that are 20 years, or at least from a 20-year-old plan, and I know, I've been a resident since that was built. I've been on some form of a commission here for a long time, and always felt like we give, not give away, like, once we sign a PUD agreement, it's done, and we have to approve, we have to abide by that, basically, from the 2004 one forever. Does the new ordinances, does our new process protect us in any way from having to sit and look at it for 20 years if only H gets built, or if only F gets built, or something like that? Is there any changes? And I know it's private property. It's not like we can march over there and demand a dog park or something like that. But is there anything better than there was 20 years ago from a half-built perspective for the community?
Well, the ordinance does, the ordinance does say that if they don't start construction within a certain time after the final plan is approved, then the PUD zoning remains in place, but that plan becomes null and void. The city would always have the option to initiate a rezoning of the property to something else. Beyond that, there's really no way to force the applicant. I mean, if you look at what has happened in the last 20 years, we had COVID that pretty much put the brakes on development, period. Then we had interest rate and construction cost increases. The market certainly has changed. So I've known Scott for quite a while. I know he hasn't just been sitting on his hands doing other things. So much of the delay, I think, has been beyond anyone's control. But beyond that, if this plan or something like this plan is approved, they are saying, if I remember correctly, that this will be a one-phase development. It's not going to be like Buildings A and B that were the first phase, and then they would gradually build additional phases later on. What they're telling us is this would be done as a single phase. That's really all we can say.
Sure. And I appreciate that. I don't ask those questions out of any ill will. I'm optimistic that this goes forward and, or something like it. So I'm more eager to see this developed than to worry about it only being half-developed. But I did want to ask that question. So then, probably, let's see, other questions that I wrote down here that haven't already been asked. I want to echo, I think, concerns about bike flow through here. Anybody who knows me well knows that's something I'm very passionate about. Very specifically, I know we're asking for a traffic study, and I'd sure love to know on the, turn this, on the north end of this project, what that really means for a bicycle rider in the street on Reed's Lake Boulevard. Because that can be the middle schooler who's maybe going faster than the stroller that they don't want to go behind on the bike path or on the sidewalk, but it can also be, you know, literally dozens or more people per day trying to get down Reed's Lake Boulevard. I joke with friends all the time who don't live here that that's like the one safe oasis to ride your bike in Kent County. So getting around the lake, using Reed's Lake Boulevard is important to a lot of people, and adding, you know, 60,000 square feet of commercial and 180 residential units, perhaps puts that at risk, but I don't know, right? I'd like to see what the traffic study says, and I just want to make sure that we address that when we talk about the traffic study, because generally, I think I echo Commissioner Tilma's remarks in that I am hugely in favor of adding housing density to Gaslight Village. It meets the master plan, and it meets a need of the community. I'm always skeptical about ground-floor retail right now, just because I spend too much time driving up and down Fulton Street, where a bunch of projects that have been built have been empty. But I think our developer here, and hopefully our desirable location, maybe sets us up differently. So optimistic that we can pull that together. I did have a question, and I know this is a standard value, so we talk about using the AMI to determine the attainable housing. What is the area when we do AMI? Is that the two-mile radius you were showing us in one of these pages, or is there, how's that determined?
I think in this case, it would be the city.
So it's the city of East Grand Rapids median income?
It's county.
It's county median income?
AMI is, it's all based on county. It's state law.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I figured that was a standard value. I just didn't know how it was arrived at. So that's super helpful. And then just, I guess, one last question for staff. Many of these documents refer to this as an amendment to the PUD, but some of our memos refer to it more as, and I got to scroll back 50 pages really quick here to make sure I read this correctly, refer to it as major changes, have to go through the entire PUD process for this new plan, including the creation of a new PUD agreement. So I'm looking for a little guidance from staff as to whether, are we, is this like adjusting the existing plan, and that existing plan still holds, or is this, hey, like Paul said, it's PUD zoning, we're starting fresh here, other than the buildings that are already there, and this is, sky's the limit? How does that work from an authoritative standpoint?
Yes.
We're in a unique situation, and obviously, we have a 20-year-old PUD, we're coming back. What is being proposed is vastly different from what was approved in 2004. So, yes, there's an existing agreement. Yes, what those final documents will look like, we'll leave to Mr. Huff and Mr. LeBlanc in regards to that. So it's, the answer is kind of, D, all the above, is we're mending and doing new, and, 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 and. So.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it for me.
Anything else from staff to add? You all set?
We're all, we're here available for questions.
Thank you, Scott and Mike. Appreciate it. We'll now allow for public comments regarding the concept plan for Gaslight Investors' PUD amendment request. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. Please address the commissioners, and please remember, this is important. This is for comments only, not a time for questions and debates. And as always, please be kind, as many of us are neighbors. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes so we don't have to enforce a time limit. If your comments are the same as another person, you can simply say you can concur or echo the previous speaker. And you may also, at a later point, direct your comments to staff via email. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment?
Did you say you don't want-
Pardon me?
You just want, you don't want questions?
Not questions, comments, please.
When is there time for questions?
Pardon me?
When is there time for questions?
Well, you can address your comments in the form of a question, and they'll be all, the developers and everyone will be taking note of that. Staff, do you have any different thoughts?
Yeah, I think if you have a question, I think you can state that, and then the developer hears it, staff hears it. I think what Chair Maves is saying is that it's not going to devolve into everyone's turning around, asking everybody different questions. So to keep the format going forward, questions, we can certainly take those down, and certainly those will be addressed. We can do that afterwards. We can do that in materials for upcoming meetings as well.
I'm Anna Moore Butzner, 2311 Wealthy Street, Lakeshore Club Condominiums. This obviously is going to affect us big time. A couple of questions, and perhaps, I think I know the answer, but I want to clarify it. The road, the back road, which is the access for D and E, that's a one-way, one-way, north-south? Okay.
South and north, Wealthy's north.
Oh. Towards Reed's Lake Boulevard, that way. And my other- And my other, oh, you said I can't do a question, I have to do a comment? Confused.
It's like Jeopardy.
You already broke the rules, so keep going.
This won't be the first time. How, how many years is this construction going to take? Or in the form of a comment? What are we talking about in terms of years? That's still a question. Can I get an answer?
Generally, two to four years.
Two to four years?
Yeah. I mean, it's, you'll, you know, in respect to Paul's comment, the intent is to, is to, is to keep moving throughout this project. You do sequence because you need lay-down areas. Some people on the construction side of the equation and the commissioner there will understand that. But we'll, we'll build the building sequentially. It can frankly be built either way, north to south or south to north. But our current plan, what we submitted, is to start D, C first and move our way out of the site. But frankly, then, but once we get to that final area, our plan market kind of drives a lot of that. You'll find I'm a big proponent of the retail importance of this. So I'd like to get D and C built at least sooner than later. So that would be our intent. But, but, but yeah, if there's a preference and flow on things, we're, we're not going anywhere.
Thank you, Anna.
Tina Marua, 1031 Lakeside Drive Southeast. And something that Ms. Schwartz brought up really resonated with me, which is the, the set aside of 10% attainable, I guess is what we're, the word we're using. I, I would actually like to see it be even more than that. I think East Grand Rapids is very unbalanced in terms of owner-occupied units. We don't have enough rental units in our community to bring young families in, to support our schools. We're seeing decreases in our, our school age population. So I would actually like to see, I, I'm very much in favor of, of a dense population center in, in the downtown area, but I would really like to see more attainable housing for more young families. I don't want to, I'm concerned that with this many units, we're looking at a lot of very small units and that won't bring in more families. And I want to, I, I really want to see some assurances that we would have, you know, maybe three-bedroom units that we could bring our younger families in so they can kind of break into the East Grand Rapids market. Right now, I think the average cost of a, a home is $800,000. That's really a very long way from attainable for most people. You know, even like teachers and city managers and, you know, people that we would like to have be able to live in our community. So I would, I would encourage even more attainable housing that incorporates the idea of younger families coming into our community.
Thank you. Next.
Shane Corey, sorry. Shane Corey, I live at 903 Orchard. And I think somewhat along the same lines, a lot of the comments I've heard from, I am one of those younger families that just moved into the city. And I think a lot of the comments I hear from people who are moving from bigger cities to West Michigan is that East Grand Rapids doesn't have a whole lot of socioeconomic diversity. I don't think anyone would disagree with that. So knowing the, the circumstances of the old PUD, I think, understanding how the city can try to limit the impact on taxpayers of this development. Obviously, there's a huge benefit of it from living in the community and being able to benefit from this new development. But trying to bring in some kind of middle-of-the-road income families into the community to, to support the schools, I think, in order to do that, being conscious of the taxpayer impacts of this is going to be really important. So along the same lines of trying to make the, the community a little bit more affordable for those families we want to get here.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Doosier. I live at 1348 Lennox. I wholeheartedly agree with both of the previous speakers about adding more housing and more affordable housing. One thing I did want to add, just as the parent of young elementary-age kids, is I would like to see that, you know, the residential mix isn't final yet, but as that's, that process moves along, I'd like to see this work really closely hand-in-hand with the schools because I think as we're realizing recently, and not so recently, there are very real capacity constraints with our schools and just working to make sure that we can successfully incorporate those new families that we're bringing into the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Michelle Brown at 538 Lovett. And I'd like to talk about trees for a moment. I feel like one of our values in East Grand Rapids is that we have our tree program for our outlaw. The developments near our city centers have a lot of very mature trees, such as Lakeshore condominiums and the apartment setup, setup there as well. These are buildings that are going to be on the order of 100 feet, not quite 100 feet tall. And I think it's very reasonable for us as a city to say, in order to blend with our community, let's have this be, have accommodation for some treescape. And I don't mean tiny trees on Wealthy Street. You know, those get up to 20, 25 feet, but something taller so that it flows with the size of the buildings. We're going to have these buildings here for 100 years and in 100 years, we can have some really beautiful trees as well. I want to also talk about truck traffic. In this, in this layout, we talk about the truck traffic that's going to be along buildings D and E and that could bring truck traffic on Wealthy Street. I think that's a pretty unwelcome, unwelcome experience. And I, I hope that is mostly just during construction, not necessarily regular deliveries, but restaurants have regular deliveries too. The DNW's truck traffic comes primarily through Shopping Center Road. That gets pretty busy. My home actually butts up to, to Shopping Center Drive. So, so I hear the truck traffic. I'm a truck, I'm a trucker's daughter, so it's a familiar sound to me. I love it. But when you look at a parking structure where the main, the main car flow is going to be down Shopping Centered Road and then you have your truck deliveries for DNW, I think that we're going to run into a congestion problem. And a traffic study, I very much concur with that idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. I would like to ask briefly, Scott, Mike, based on the comments slash questions, would you like to add anything briefly right now before we bring it back up here?
First of all, I'm glad none of their elephants were your elephants. So, but I think the housing thing, I think we're studying that. I think the intent was to have a more diverse offering of, of housing types. So I think, I don't think we're that inconsistent with a lot of the comments. I think we will, I think it is, I think Scott's intent would be to make sure that he's got units that are going to be desirable to the community. So looking at small families and, and what their needs would be as well, or what their wants would be in terms of housing is definitely something we'll look at. But I think the, the attainable housing side of it is still in discussion. So I think we'll take these comments and, and look at that. I do think the, we've really looked at the truck traffic hard because they really have to come in, that's why it's one-way. They're coming in off of Wealthy. They're not getting into the main commercial area of Wealthy and they're kind of getting over to Shopping Center to, to leave. So we've really studied how we can make sure that the, the primary Wealthy Street corridor, as well as kind of this new, call it Bagley Extension, mixed juice retail corridor is unobstructed by truck traffic. But the reality is the retailers need to get product to them. So I think we're definitely wanting to make sure that it doesn't disrupt the, the flow of what we're calling kind of the main thoroughfares. So I think that's, most, a lot of it was related to the housing. So I think, I think we're encouraged by those comments.
Thank you. Scott?
Sorry, I had to go to the bathroom.
I asked if there was anything briefly you wanted to comment before we bring discussion back up front, based on the public comment.
You know, not necessarily outside of, I think these were great comments. I spent six years on MISTAs board. The, the attainable side is, is something that I, I don't want to completely gentrify the area. So I think it is important to do. A lot of the, the, call it the, the magic, so to speak, of how to make this work, I got to make it work economically. And so those are all components. You know, whether that's 5%, 10%, 15%, 20%, a lot of it is just trying to understand what the, engage what the needs of the community are going to be. We have had numerous conversations, you know, in terms of making sure, which I, my wife and I are going to be moving into the community this fall, that I, I love, I love it. I want that, I want that younger generation to be able to be here. And we've heard numerous comments, my wife is, happens to be a retailer, where a number of her employees can't necessarily live in the community where they work. And, and, and I think that's true with tenants on, on, in Gaslight Village or our teachers or some other, particularly maybe on the younger side. AMI does define what that is. And so sometimes when we try to define, so it's a newer state law that was passed in 2023, when we get into this, as you'll hear workforce and you'll hear attainable, apparently attainable is the more appropriate word. So anyway, so the, yeah, there is, there is, I, I love, I love the comments, I love the idea and, and what we can make economically, that's what I'm trying to drive. So we certainly want to address that part of it, though.
Thank you, Scott. We'll bring it back up here now. Commissioners, please remember again that this is an introduction tonight and we should focus on the overall concept plan. Is there any feedback you'd like to give the developer about what you'd like to see in the site plan, such as the traffic studies you mentioned and things like that? We'll start this on this time. Matt?
Sure. Thank you. Well, as I mentioned before, you know, a pedestrian bicycle corridor or lane would be something I would really like to see, just a little stronger definition in that respect. But as a whole, I really like this plan. I like the mix of uses. I'm glad to see it contains a lot of housing. We're, I believe, 95% single-family homes in East Grand Rapids, so we really could use a wider variety of housing, whether that's apartments or condos or townhouses. So I'm glad to see that. I think this project could help bring energy and vitality to our business district and our community. So I'm looking forward to it.
I'd echo that. I think this is a really good start. I'm excited about it. I, I would just say, like everybody else had, has, let's get some of those studies of traffic, pedestrian flow, those kinds of things that are going to make it usable for us. And, you know, there's other questions. I keep trying to remember, this is a concept design, but, you know, thinking about aesthetics and how we would want massing to be, but I think it's a good start.
A quick follow-up on my dream of extending Crosswell through. You know, the idea of designing this so that, you know, you are already thinking about that, but to be able to, to design it such that, you know, maybe even with a stub road approaching DNW from the north, just something that would allow for the best possible development of that future, of that parcel. Commissioner Metz says it is going to be redeveloped, so I'll take his word at it. And let's make sure that, that is compatible and in a very good way with what you're doing. It's for studies, so we have, we have a traffic study, which we can include, we can add pedestrian and cycling to that, is that right? And then we have parking. And then the comments about attainable housing, that is something that, that is, is another elephant in the room. And, you know, maybe some type of basic housing market analysis, you know, like where, where are we coming from, looking at the regional picture, the Housing Now study, and then kind of zooming into East Grand Rapids, you know, what are we, what are we really looking at? Just so we're not, you know, completely blind about that, I think it'd be really helpful. And then fiscal impact, that will come up at some point too, right? The tax, property tax revenue and everything else, is that going to come up? Staff?
Staff, can you answer that?
Something as we get into the final site plan, things of that nature, as we talk about traffic study, pedestrian studies, things of that nature, that's all part of the, the final site plan. So the, it's final site plan approval. So we're, we're here, once we get there, we'll have all those kind of conversations.
And the fiscal impact, the whole property tax picture, all that?
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll start modeling out stuff.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I think most of my comments in my first round were, were good. So just, I'll echo optimism and excitement. This is what we need to see in Gaslight Village for sure, or some version of this. I mean, given the early stage in the process that we're at, it can, this is exactly what we need to see right now. So glad and happy to see it moving forward.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No, great comments all around. Obviously, I'll just echo the bike, the repeated comments about the bike flow, pedestrian flow, and a lot of comments about landscape. And I know you guys will get to it. I know it'll be beautiful, but just, I think, highlight that in your next presentation. A quick question I just thought of, on the attainable housing, is that condo or apartments that you?
Rental.
Rental, okay.
One comment and a couple, or one question and a couple of comments. Is there, I know this is conceptual, but I don't see any, any, one of the things on the PUD conceptual says, show where the stormwater and stormwater detention goes. I didn't see anything on any of the plans. And I want to make sure that there's something.
Come on, John.
I'm Galuszczak, civil engineer of Nederweil. So we have a pretty good conceptual idea and I, we should have at least catch basins and pipes shown. We still need to start finalizing our stormwater design. Good chunk of the site is all impervious area, so we wouldn't need to do additional detention for that. Any additional detention for the north end of the site would be underground. We've got to work with city staff, trying to figure out exactly how do we comply with the newest standards. But that would be our, our go-to solution.
My main focus would be on first flush, what stormwater quality.
Sure. I, you know, we would, again, comply with the city standards, have water quality treatments prior to discharge into the city system that's running from Shopping Center East, existing pipe there that would tie all of our, our stormwater into. We will provide that treatment of that first flush. That's in the, the city standards, so.
Thank you. That, that was my one question. My two comments is, are, I'd really like to see a layout where we connect Bagley to Reed's Lake Boulevard, incorporating the bike lanes and pedestrian access to be more consistent with the master plan. And then maybe some more robust justification on the height. That's it.
That's it.
Thanks for doing this. This looks, looks great. I want to be better than Ada and I think this will really make us way better than Ada. So I'm excited about that. One thing I failed to mention the first time, I really appreciate the fact that today you've opened your development up to the community. And what's really special to me and my family is when the band plays there before the football game.
is when the band plays there before the football games. And that's pretty great. Christmas time, the, the, the town comes together and we're in this area celebrating the holidays. And so I'm wondering, and you don't have to answer this, answer this today, but I'd be curious to see if you want, if you're going to allow that to continue to happen. And if so, where would that happen on this site? And you don't have to do this today, the next time, sure. Because that's cool.
I can add to that, as obviously anything in time I can incur in gathering, I'm going to do that.
That's going to be on Mike Corby's shoulders to make sure he nails it. Because if not, we're all going, we're going to know who to blame. So, or actually Scott, probably. I'd like to see the next time, and this is more for integrated, just ground level 3D shots, especially looking towards CND, ENF. I'd like to understand the relationship to the street a little bit more. And just from some other vistas, just so we can, that'll help us to understand the, the height, I think, a little bit too, where you can see it from a distance and you're, you know, and I, and I've done a lot of these in my life, and you kind of realize, oh, it's, it, it doesn't feel as big, especially from a distance. But I think that'll help everybody understand what's really going on. And lastly, just sustainability and landscaping. I know your firm is pretty sustainability focused. I would love to understand a little bit more how that's going to roll into this development. And that'd be great. And thanks, appreciate it.
I strongly support parking study and, and, or most especially a parking study and traffic study, having those separate parking in particular. I'm also going to be very curious to hear, you know, the reactions to the adjacent neighbors. So the businesses along Wealthy Street, apartments that are adjacent to it, the condominiums that are adjacent to it, DNW, Spartan Ash, their feedback, anything you can do, even the neighbors along Lovett, Greenwood, that are impacted about it. So anything you could do in advance of, you know, site plan to, you know, to, to address any concerns there, I think would be very helpful.
Thank you. Staff, to clarify a question, the studies and things that we mentioned, that would be part of a final site plan, nothing that we need to think about now, but things that we're making, giving feedback that we'd like to see further down. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you so much. At this point, based on conversations, are we comfortable to move to a public hearing in July? Are you generally comfortable with the overall concept plan?
In favor?
Well, if everyone seems comfortable, I'd like to take a formal vote to affirm that we are ready to proceed for a public hearing. Is there a motion and a second to schedule-
Wait, wait. Yeah, what are we talking about? What step are we taking? I think we have some, some support, but also some big concerns here. I think we might want to slow down a little bit.
Well, that's why I was asking the question. Doug can-
Sure. So, so if you, scheduling a public hearing is part of the process, you could have the public hearing at the next meeting, and you could decide not to, to vote on it. So you could, you could go on for additional meetings.
It's still conceptual.
The public hearing is a requirement. So, so technically, for this type of process, like tonight, we wouldn't even need to take public comment, but, but we do that here. So it's more of a legal formality to make sure that we have a formal public hearing at that meeting. So-
In practice, it's tonight, round two.
Yes. Yep. It doesn't, it doesn't require that you, you have to take a vote at the next meeting. It's just saying, the formal, the legal formal public hearing would be at the July meeting.
Would the public be able to ask questions? Or would be a similar format?
Right.
Just, I mean, this is a tough thing under, under open meetings, and how, how, the tough thing with public hearings sometimes is it's not necessarily like the best for those type of engagement. Let staff noodle on this. I want to talk to the team and think about this. Obviously, we have a lot of interest from the community on this, and we may want to work with the developers and thinking about some sort of community conversation. But having said that, that's based on the feedback we've gotten tonight. But the public hearing is, again, as Doug noted, a formal step in that process. You can hold the hearing, you can, based on the feedback you get at that meeting, say, yeah, we're ready to refer to the city commission. Again, we're at the conceptual stage, remembering that, conceptually, yeah, we're comfortable with kind of the form, massing, the layout, but knowing that you're going to get all the details in regards to what the buildings are going to look like, what's the landscaping, what are the utilities, the next round during the final site plan, that's, you'll, your package is going to be big. We'll get into all the questions of how many housing units, things of that nature, how high the building, colors, all that fun stuff that planning commissions get to do, and we don't do that so often here. For those who have experience with site, site plans in other communities, that's that really big. That'll be the final. But this enables the developer to say, okay, generally, this is over plan, we're ready to move forward, this is start committing dollars to final designs, and things of that nature. So, but by having the hearing in July, it checks that box for us in regards to our legal obligation under our zoning code.
Is the expectation that it would be exactly the same conceptual site plan that would be looked at? Or is-
We'll, we'll have an opportunity to talk to the developer and see where we're at, so.
So they could change before then? It's possible.
It's possible.
It's, it's changeable or whatever.
It's changeable, but we'll, we'll have an opportunity to speak with the developer.
Just a question about when to do something. So I, I'm thinking in my own mind, like, when it comes time to vote to send even the concept to the city commission, I'm not comfortable doing that until we've had a, some sort of public Q and A session, whatever you think's going to happen. Do we put that in tonight's, or do we put that in the next one? Because I don't care when, as long as we get to say that we want that.
But if you schedule in, look at Scott and his team.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
I'm trying to think of what it'd be good.
Where do you put the public Q and A?
Yeah, ideally, ideally, we'll try to work with the developer, get something before the public hearing. If you schedule it, I know one of the agenda items is, later on is what, when the July meeting will be, because I know we're running into some conflicts of availability of the board on July-
Ninth?
Ninth. So if we're looking at a later date in July for that, that will give, obviously give more opportunity for that. Again, also note that, just referring this to city commission, city commission gets to go through a similar type cycle in regards to introduction of the, of the plan, and then consideration, again, conceptual is what we're talking about.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess for Brian, for your, you're looking for a, like a public, like a charrette kind of Q and A, or are you looking for a more interactive public with?
We, so for, for Crosswell Muse, which is the last PUD that we did, we did a, I don't even know how to, I don't think it was nearly as formal as a charrette, but it was a chance for residents who have a list of questions to actually ask them and have someone answer the questions, or say, we don't know today, but we're going to know tomorrow, and it'll be in an email or a newsletter that we, which is usually the answer, right? You don't have to know it on the spot. But being able to formally ask those questions and know that they're going to get an answer gives people tremendous confidence that we are moving forward in a good way. So I don't care when we do that. I just don't want to send it to the city commission till we do.
And you're saying that can't be part of the public hearing next?
Public hearing is a kind of a-
Typically, it is.
Yeah, okay. That's what I would have thought, too.
Okay.
So, so it could be a part of the next-
It never is here, and not, usually isn't here, right? Like, we just told them, don't ask questions. We're not going to answer them if you do. I want, I want the opposite, right? Like, come on up and ask a question, and by golly, we'll give you an answer. So that would be, that would be my hope.
I think John has something to add.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think the manager described it correctly. I mean, normally a public hearing, the rules would be that you address your comments to the commission, you don't address your comments to the developer. And the commission would normally take those and try and get answers to them. But that being said, I mean, I, I also think what Commissioner Miller's saying is that on a project of this magnitude, it would be helpful at some point, whether it's at that public hearing or at a separate meeting, to allow members of the community to have interaction with both city officials and the developers, so they can get some of their questions answered. You know, I, it's, it's hard because when we, the public hearing, which is, the manager says is required by state law, would generally have rules that would say that is not the time for questions and answers. That doesn't mean there can't be or shouldn't be a time for questions and answers. It's just normally not at that hearing.
How about something like a very simple open house that could be before the meeting? Some of these beautiful images could be blown up a little bit, put on some.
Our commitment is, we will work with the developer to get a, some sort of community engagement session before, if the commission sets a July public hearing, we will have, work with them to get a community, some sort of community engagement session, what that looks like, when, how, et cetera. We've got to figure that out, but.
I guess it's really up to the developer, right? You know, the, it's to their, what we're saying is that it's to the developer's benefit, helps us-
Yep.
-to have a public hearing with Q and A with the public.
Can I address that, though?
Yeah.
I mean, just, you know, it's, it's, it was 2004. It's been 20 years. Having multiple meetings is not a concern. So we're, we'll, we'll never be accused of not being patient. And, and, and I think, kind of on a procedural process side, the way I'd see it, it, it really is just the step of, you have a public hearing because you're required to have a public hearing. And you don't have to vote on something like that. Again, the city attorney and city managers, deputy city manager can describe all that. So oftentimes, in other communities, we'll do both. You have your public meeting because you're required to. And then you may table that, and then you schedule an open house, and then you have the Q and A and the type of things that you're talking about, totally fine. We can do that as Shay is saying, that we can, you know, we'll, we'll work on what that timing and what that looks like. But I, I'm, this isn't a sprint. So I think we just work through the process.
Thank you. So based on all that, what's everyone's thoughts?
If you need, I mean, we can move to-
Go ahead.
-create a public hearing at the next meeting. Is that what you're looking for? All right. I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing at our July Planning Commission meeting.
Second, is there any further discussion before we take a vote?
Just to be clear, we've been talking about possibly having an informal neighbor engagement session before that?
Yes.
Okay.
I would make that a condition of the, of the, whatever the proposal is, to have the public, the public session interaction before the, before the next planning commission.
Yeah, I meant to say that.
I'll just say, I know we're trying to, you know, balance, you know, schedules here. The sooner we can get that date kind of nailed down, I think the better for everybody, if it's not going to be July ninth.
Yeah, that's later on the agenda real soon. So do we need to make a new motion?
No, I think Pete was just paraphrasing what I was saying much better than I was.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No further discussion. All those in favor of moving on to a public hearing in July, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is the report of the city commissioner, commissioned by Commissioner Spores. Thank you, Laura.
Thanks. I will keep it short. So just, you know, related to this, if anybody sitting here is listening, or public is listening, feel free to reach out to your commissioner and share any comments, concerns, positive thoughts, whatever, on this plan. A couple other things, we've got farmers markets now. Can you remind me the time of the farmer's market?
Every Thursday from eight to, eight to one.
Eight thirty to one?
Eight thirty to one.
Eight thirty to one. So that's just right here next to the library. So feel free to come on out and support those small businesses. And then at our, at our last meeting, we did vote to, I think it was the last meeting, put the streets and sidewalks millage officially on the August ballot. And so that would basically continue the current millage to continue repairing and improving our streets and sidewalks. And that is that. We can move on.
Anything to add, Doug? Shay?
Just that we're, if you're wondering what's going on, outside the building on the roof, it's our solar panel project is finally being installed, so.
Sweet, cool.
How long will that take?
We hope it'll be done, if weather cooperates, as that's, that's each part of construction. We're hopefully, hoping in the next couple of weeks, we'll wrap up here. And just for information on that, this project, it'll, it'll generate about 20, four to 25% of our electrical needs onsite here for this campus, which is, which is great, so.
Is that adding capacity, or are you replacing?
This, this will be, we had a first generation solar array that was here, if that's what you're referencing. This is a second generation where we're utilizing essentially all of the space that we have available on our, on our roof to, to generate onsite electricity.
So you're increasing the total square footage?
Correct.
Great.
Is it net metered? So if it's generating and you're not using the power, does it go back to the grid?
Yes.
Cool.
How would you say the first farmer's market went last week?
Really good.
Good.
Is it just in the parking lot here?
It's the north side. It's completely blocked off for, for those mornings. Right now, it's blocked off for the, the solar project as well. But if you've been to some of our, like our touch a truck event or anything like that, we're blocking off that whole lot. So if you're, if you're at the complex, or if you're walking-
By the kayak launch?
Nope, no.
Other side here.
Right next to the library.
Gotcha.
It's all the way on the ladies' number.
Gotcha. Yeah.
It's pretty level.
Anything else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion of the July meeting date, as Shay alluded to already. Our July 2024 Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 9th. But because the week of July 4th is the previous week, city wants to confirm full attention for our next meeting. Any thoughts, anyone, if people are going to be around on Tuesday, July 9th?
Yeah. I think just to clarify, I think the alternative we're really looking at is either the 9th or the following Tuesday, which is the 16th. I know, we have gotten some confirmation that we could have the facilities available at both of those dates. So I think that's kind of the decision, discussion in terms of also aligning with the normal Tuesday date.
I can do the 9th, but not the 16th.
I can do the 9th also.
I can do the 9th as well.
I can do the 9th.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'd prefer the 9th. I can do either, but. 9th is good.
Do we need to take a vote on that to change it?
No, it's, it's our regular date, so we're good.
Okay, good. And we'll, you'll figure out time about the question and answer before that.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Thank you, everyone, for doing tons of research and reading ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for running.
Based on kind of experience.
Yeah, I was looking at that schedule, and gosh, where was that? Trying to count all the different dates.
Couple meetings here, couple meetings there, back here.
We're gathering it.
Twenty years coming.
Yeah, that's a lot of meetings.
It's your summer, right?
I was shy to say that.
It was not a contentious meeting.
I can't believe it.
I thought it was just my dream, and it sounds like it's just-
I was surprised more people gave a speech.
See you guys.
See you.
But I think that's got to be up there.
Right. Well, right. You're going to, you're going to, you're going to fight out tomorrow. Don't, don't listen tonight.
It comes later.
Because it is what it is at this point.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you.
I knew that was going to happen. Listen, it's been two, two plus hours.
Little neighborhood.
Yeah, just like go to the farmer's-
A little bit of a dry topic, yeah.